It is February sixteenth at seven thirty. We'll call the Little Falls City Council meeting. Order and say the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Now we do have a quorum. Everyone is in attendance with the exception of the mayor and councilmember Lundberg. All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off all cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda. Approve the agenda as opposed to the open meeting law. Here in place all agenda items on the table for discussion. What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion by councilmember Story, second by councilmember Goschek. Call roll, please.
Canopla?
Yes.
Wilchigrin?
Yes.
Herkak?
Yes.
Doryn?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Harries.
Approval of the minutes. The special work session meeting of February first, two thousand twenty-one, and the regular meeting of February first, two thousand twenty-one. Approved. What's the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by councilmember Canopla, second by councilmember Wilchigrin. Call roll, please.
Wilchigrin?
Yes.
Herkak?
Yes.
Doryn?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Harries.
Approval of the bills. Checks one zero four, two three seven through one zero four, three zero five, totaling seven hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars, ninety-four cents. Approved. Now what is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Goschek, second by councilmember Story. Call roll, please.
Herkak?
Yes.
Doryn?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Wilchigrin?
Yes.
Harries.
Awards, donations, presentations, and proclamations. We have none today. Consent agenda. Animal control report, January two thousand twenty-one received. Economic development authority minutes, January two thousand twenty-one received. Heritage preservation commission minutes, January and February two thousand twenty-one received. Housing redevelopment authority minutes, December two thousand twenty received. Planning commission minutes, February two thousand twenty-one received. Police report, January two thousand twenty-one received. Emporary on sale liquor licenses. Friends of Linden Hills fundraiser events approved. Waste water report, January two thousand twenty-one received. Water report, January two thousand twenty-one received. What is the wish of the council?
Mr. Goschek, I move to receive and approve the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Hanson, second by councilmember Story. Call roll, please.
Herkak?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Wilchigrin?
Yes.
Harries.
Public hearings and lettings. Lettings. Number one, SWAT car related equipment for the police department. Chief.
President, members of the council, good evening. Tonight I am requesting authorization to purchase and set up a twenty twenty-one award police receptor award. Vehicle would be, it's a utility vehicle that would be purchased from ten forty four to San Pollock. Vehicle itself would be thirty-three thousand, six hundred and six dollars and one fourth cents. The complete setup cost, including the vehicle, would be sixty thousand, sixty-six dollars and ninety-five cents. This would be part of this paid contract pricing. This will replace, I believe it's a two thousand, four or two thousand thirteen. So much of the equipment in that vehicle is not available. Most vehicles put out of service. So I did include a whole list of the bill of this vehicle so you have a detailed list of all the equipment that we will include.
What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Canopla, second by councilmember Wilchigrin. Discussion. Call roll, please.
Story?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Wilchigrin?
Yes.
Herkak?
Yes.
Harries.
Evidence intake locker, RDP concepts for the police department. Chief.
President, again I am requesting authorization to purchase evidence intake locker from RDP concepts at a cost of four thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars. Essentially what this is, is a large locker with different bins. When officers collect evidence, they place those items in this locker instead of putting it in our current evidence locker room. A supervisor will then take custody of the evidence from this locker and then secure it from the evidence room. Basically this aligns with best practices. Currently our evidence room, it's pretty small space, very small space. And each officer has their own bin or locker within that space. So this will eliminate the need to have individual lockers. So we can remove all the lockers, install a bin system, and then the evidence room will be managed by two supervisors who live in the office. Two things that align with best practices and again would give us more of a better experience. And then that would, the cost for the purchase of that locker would include capital and be.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Story, second by councilmember Hanson. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Wilchigrin?
Yes.
Herkak?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Harries.
Mobile phones for the police department. Chief.
Mr. President, the last item I have for this evening, I am requesting authorization to move to department issue phones. The request I have before you include sixteen iPhone elevens and cases and services associated with that. The reasoning behind wanting to department issue phones, currently the way technology has evolved with these phones, a lot of officers are using their own pushing devices for evidence collection, different statements and most types of things. And that did work for a while. What's happening now, the regular evolving with data practices and some new regulations that are in place, it's preferred that that evidence does not, is not put on pushing devices. And if an officer is involved in a pure coincidence or an investigation where devices can be taken and held as evidence. Or in a case where an officer may be using a personal cellphone for photographs or using it in some way related to a case, that device can be seized with the data that may be on it. So we would like to move to office, to department issue phones just to create that separation between work and personal use. Currently my, the officers in the LALS, I believe they receive twenty-five dollar reimbursement for their phone and then those of us in the other union and supervising union, I believe you can see forty dollars. So those monthly stipends would offset some of the monthly costs associated with home time. My request would be then to purchase sixteen iPhone elevens, cases for those, and then the service associated. So total cost for the device, the devices and the petted cases is three dollars, five dollars, eighty-four cents. And then monthly recurrence service cost would be seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-two cents. And again, some of those monthly costs would be us. And then the cost associated with this switch to department issue phones would include in my budget, this department budget to twenty-five.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by councilmember Hanson, second by councilmember Canopla. Any discussion?
Mr. President, will these phones be signed in and out at the beginning and end of the shift? Or will these officers keep them in their personal possession even when they're not on duty?
They will keep them. They'll be assigned to them individually. They'll also be managed, will be used in IT services. The CTC and software will be loaded on each phone and will be managed by IT services. So essentially they'll be locked down and you can't, we won't be able to download apps or the software automatically in through that IT services.
Well, chief, I think this is a really good idea. I think the rationale for doing this makes sense. I think as technology has evolved, it just doesn't make sense to have people on their old phones. A private company I worked for kind of went through entertaining some of this and you're going to have a few people out there that are going to take the stipend or the reimbursement and try to get by with as little as they can to not spend the money. So, and I like the, having the apps locked down by IT services. I, with my employer, I had the same deal. They, they play on the phone what they want on the phone and nothing else goes on.
Yeah, the staff was excited to move this direction. We do collect a lot of photos and our images on places that essentially should not be on the personal devices. And then as far as, you know, checking them, figuring out, it makes more sense for them to use the officer with their own device. They'll keep that device with them. You know, if they receive a call after hours or some of the, some of the members of the department, they live on SWAT team or the dive team or investigators. So it's much easier in my, in my perspective, it's less expensive to issue a phone to the officer that would have an issue with it.
Call roll, please.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Wilchigrin?
Yes.
Herkak?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Harries.
Old business we have none. Do business. Position description update and advertise for seasonal employees. Streets and parks, streets, parks and engineering authorized. Greg.
Good evening, Mr. President and councilmembers. Before this evening, we have the request to hire three additional seasonal employees. Two of them will be in the parks and streets. One of them will be in the engineering department. One thing I'll note that I overlooked on the streets and parks job description when we were updating it, we updated it from eighteen years old to sixteen year old to be able to apply for that position, basically helping us mow lawns and whip around trees. But one of the requirements that we have on there is a high school development or a GED. I'm not sure how many sixteen year olds have that at this point in time. So we would like to strike that from it as well. But otherwise everything else would be the same. The engineering, individual for the seasoning, seasonal help would allow us to do a lot more of the projects that we've got planned. As you know, we've got quite a healthy construction program slated for this year and so that would help us out as well in that field. So this evening we are asking the council to approve those two postings so that we can have three seasonal employees for the engineering as well as parks.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Wilchigrin, second by councilmember Story. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Real, real quick, because Greg mentioned mowing lawns and now we're going from eighteen to sixteen. I know that was a concern of at the golf course. We were trying to get that age lowered so we could expand the candidate pool for the seasonal workers out there as something changed.
So with my understanding with eighteen year old, you, in order to drive a vehicle, you need to be eighteen years old. At sixteen, you can use the equipment, but you can't drive it. So we generally pair them up with individuals, you know, that we currently have to be able to vote and use the, more than suddenly using a leverage possession to be able to help overarm parks.
Okay, so maybe we need to just keep this in mind when it comes to hiring for the golf course this summer.
Call roll, please.
Canopla?
Yes.
Wilchigrin?
Yes.
Herkak?
Yes.
Doryn?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Harries.
Heritage preservation commission recommendation. Submit a legacy grant and muster grant. Historic wayfinding signage master plan. Accepted, approved. Greg.
Good evening. As I mentioned in the work session at HPC, we are looking at the wayfinding sign project throughout the city. There are two programs that we've identified to help us move forward with that, with that project. One is the Lower Jane Muster one. That one does not, does have a match. It is in a month of five thousand dollars. The other one is the Minnesota Historical Society. That one does not have a match. That one is ten thousand dollars. The historical society applications are due on April ninth and so we'll bring in application for your approval on that. Lower Jane Muster one opens up again, I think it was September, and we'll be bringing in an application later on for that one as well. But this evening we are looking for the council's approval or authorization to move forward with the grants. Ultimately, we will bring those applications to you for final approval, but just to make sure that you're still on board with the wayfinding sign. Project is what we're looking for this evening.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Story, second by councilmember Hanson. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President. Greg, what's the total cost for the Little Falls area on this, on these signs? Do you have, do you have an estimate on that?
I know when we, the first application that we did, basically almost a year ago, it was about twenty thousand dollars total for, for everything. And that included signs as well as, you know, doing some research and stuff on it. So we're in that twenty, twenty-five thousand dollar range is where I anticipate this to be.
Mr. President, so this would probably be, probably cover what we need to do for that signage, huh?
That's correct, yes.
Call roll, please.
Wilchigrin?
Yes.
Herkak?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canopla? Canopla?
Appears that he's dropped from the meeting.
Harries.
I see. It appears part of the cutoff on my paper when I printed it. All I have is expand that nonconforming lot two hundred, northeast first street.
I printed it out. You need a Jekyll and DePerey setting.
Yes, I do.
So the planning commission met last Monday night. This is resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three variance to expand that conformal ladder two hundred RFPs, first street RFPs. Did you have a public hearing for that? We got a request for a twenty-six by twenty-eight addition onto the building. Essentially what they're looking at doing is building that, that size garage so towards First Avenue. Planning commission recommended approval of that, that variance request. They did have two conditions on it. One was to add snow rakes to the building if they have metal roofing on it to make sure the snow doesn't fall off onto the neighbor's property. And then others on that same side involved both were dating to the east side of the building. So again, the planning commission is recommending approval of that variance request.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Goschek, second by councilmember Hanson. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I just want to expand on what Greg had said. And the reality is the need for a variance on this isn't because of the new construction. It's because of the existing construction. So they're not, they're not seeking a variance to do something additional. It, it, it just, it's nuanced in that the way it was already built, it, it doesn't mean a setback requirement.
Thank you. Call roll, please.
Wilchigrin?
Yes.
Herkak?
Yes.
Doryn?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Harries.
Professional services agreement, IT support services, CTCIT. Approved and authorized. John.
Thank you, Council President. Before you have a consultant service contract, this is the form contract from Polarity and Fit that, that we use. We're trying to use now in most of our service agreements. We are requesting approval and continuation of our agreement with CTCIT. They have been an excellent resource for us as in the three years that they've been providing our services. I have just absolute confidence that they're going to continue to provide that and do so at a very affordable rate. They, they're just, it's been excellent. And I would say if not for them, we would not have been in the position that we were in when the pandemic started and we had to move into such a remote environment. They handled that transition seamlessly and got us up and running really, really quickly. So I'm just very pleased with their, and that we have an extension in their contract.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Hanson, second by councilmember Story. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Doryn?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Wilchigrin?
Yes.
Herkak?
Yes.
Harries.
Request for proposals. Website design replacement. Approved. John.
Thank you, Council President. As we discussed earlier, our website was updated in two thousand, or in two thousand sixteen. We went up for an RFP. I think the final completion date of that was, was later that year, early twenty seventeen. We, we are, we had an agreement with Golden Shovel to provide that, that service. They did offer to do a refresh for us. However, I believe based on the, the work that, the work that staff has to do with the website, what my experience with it, it is the opportunities that we have coming up in the future with the, some of the new service providers that we have and the efforts that we want to make. We are looking to request going up for an RFP to, to do a full redesign, replacement of our existing website. I would say that, you know, Golden Shovel, they would be welcome to, to, again, provide a response to the RFP. There's just additional services and needs that we're, we're really looking to try to make sure that are, are available to us in that development of our, of our new website. So it's, it feels that it was right at this time that we could make that request and look for additional, you know, additional opportunities to make sure that we have the best website that we can look for to see.
What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
I was going to say, Wayne, every time you clear your throat, I think you're getting ready to say something.
Motion by councilmember Canopla, second by councilmember Wilchigrin. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President. John, will this be put out for bidding purposes or how will this be awarded?
Yeah, so there, there's, and item number two is the RFP criteria. So RFPs are similar to bids. It's a little bit different in that we're, we're looking for a service, not, not necessarily an item. So, so it is a, it's not just the redesign of a website, here, here you go, and then you do nothing more with it. There is maintenance work that we want to have maintained for us while our website, while we're under that agreement. So, so that's why we do an RFP process. So effectively we are getting like bids for, for that design work and ongoing maintenance.
Call roll, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Wilchigrin?
Yes.
Herkak?
Yes.
Doryn?
Yes.
Harries.
Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash eighteen, supportive paying local government aid on time and in full. Adopt. John.
Thank you, Council President. I don't know if you've been aware, but there's been a number of bills that have been introduced in the last, since session started and, and a lot of them regarding local government aid. Some of them are really problematic, to say the least. And I know the League of Minnesota Cities and the Coalition Great Minnesota Cities, the Association of Small Cities have, have spoken out against some of them. There's some efforts to try to connect local government aid to efforts that happened in the civil distress this last summer, the rioting, you know, the challenges that happened in the metro and to what we spend our, our local government aid dollars on. Really, the, the program itself is, has been around since nineteen seventy-one. It has gone through a number of evolutions. It is, you know, the formulas change. But at its core, it's a general aid contribution to local governments that was established to, you know, aid cities in the state based on factors that, you know, addressed needs and concerns for cities in our state, communities interstate that they would have to generate revenue. To try to balance between property rich cities, like some in the metro or, you know, other small cities that may have high property values around the lake, to other cities that are regional centers, much like ours, that don't have those luxuries and don't have those high property taxes. You know, large commercial districts along, you know, interstate corridors. These, the balance there is really to make sure that every community has at its core some dollars to operate with, to use as they best see fit. In some instances, it's to make sure that they're, they're fully funding their police departments and fire departments. And others, it's to make sure that they can do maintenance of streets and other improvements. In other communities, it might be that they can afford to maintain their parks and manage the, the parks and recreations opportunities that they have for their residents. Every city in the state's going to be a little bit different. No city can, you know, truly say that of the X dollars that they get from local government they're spending Y on those dollars, those exact dollars are going to one thing or another that someone at the state thinks isn't, is a, not an important use of a local, local funds. What it does for us is it covers forty percent of our general fund operating. In two thousand fifteen, that number was closer to fifty percent. You know, even with the major raises that they've had, these have been incredibly important dollars for us to make sure that our levies stay, have, have stayed flat or that we were able to do this last year. And then in turn, our tax rate has, has been going down. So we've, we've used, we've used local government aid in a lot of different ways. But our, our asks are that we shouldn't be able to maintain this and use it in the ways that you all, as councilmembers, see, see best. That our community shouldn't be prohibited to say that if we don't use it, or if we use it for something, if, if we have any general fund expense for something that someone at the state level thinks is not important to our community, that that's, that's what we're trying to, you know, make the message to them to say. We, we make a determination, we get elected by our residents, I'm speaking in, in terms for you as council members, but that you, you know, you see that these are important needs in our community. We're never gonna be able to track that individual dollar from LG back to what is a property tax dollar, back to what is a bond or the, or anything else. But we have, you know, the ability to, to budget, we have the ability to plan for our expenses, and you make those priorities when we go through the budget process. And you did a very thorough, you do very thorough work at that every single year. And we're getting better and we're making it more transparent. So the community knows what it is that we're spending our dollars on, and it shouldn't be at the whim of the state to say, oh, because that community had the civil distress that they can't use their local government aid dollars, I'm certain.
What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I'll move to approve Resolution 2021-18. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starly, second by Councilmember Hansen, any discussion? Call or roll, please.
Goschek?
Yes.
Knopfela?
Yes.
Wiltjegren?
Yes.
Herkak?
Yes.
Dorley?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Harys?
Resolution 2021-19, Sidewalk Reconstruction Installation, adopt. Gray?
Good evening. Uh, in front of you, I have Resolution 2020-19, that is order the feasibility report. If you recall, uh, one of the league Minnesota cities recommendations is that we have an annual sidewalk improvement project basically to fix any tripping hazards that, that may be out there. So generally, in the past, we've gone through a third of the city every year. I know the last two years, we've, we haven't done that just because of the size of our other projects that we've got going on. Uh, but this year, we're picking it back up again. And so in front of you, I think there's like thirty-five parcels that we've identified that have tripping hazards in front of them. And so we would like to order the feasibility report um under 2020-19 so that we can, you know, stay in compliance with our, our ADA requirements.
2021-19, no, correct?
Yes, sorry, 2021-19.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-19.
I agree.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Wiltjegren, any discussion? Call or roll, please.
Knopfela?
Yes.
Wiltjegren?
Yes.
Herkak?
Yes.
Dorley?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Wilchik?
Yes.
Harys?
Resolution 2021-20, Accept Feasibility Report and Call for Public Hearing Sidewalks, adopt.
This is the feasibility report for, uh, for the project. Uh, we'd be asking for the council to call the public hearing, so in a month from now, we'd have residents come in, uh, be able to give their input on the, on the project. As before, we do anticipate a number of these residents to correct the, the tripping hazard themselves. Uh, so you'll see the, the adjusted um estimate based on, based on that. But this evening, we are asking you to accept the feasibility report and call for, for public hearing on March fifteenth. Uh, we do anticipate, like I said, some of those residents doing it themselves, and so we will structure the, the bid package so that after June first, when our contractor will do, uh, do the work if it hasn't been fixed. But prior to that, uh, we allow the residents time to make the, to do that.
What is the wish of the council? Move to approve, please.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Canofla, second by Councilmember Starly, any discussion? Call or roll, please.
Wiltjegren?
Yes.
Herkak?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Wilchik?
Yes.
Knopfela?
Yes.
Harys?
Resolution 2021-21, Call for Public Hearing, Issuance of Revenue Obligations by City of Peers, Finance Project by Horizon Health Incorporated, adopt. Glory?
Yes, before you tonight, we have a request um from Horizon Health to hold a public hearing, which would allow them to spend some bonding dollars that they are heading through the city of peers here in the city of Little Falls. There's no obligation to the city um as far as its expenses or making any type of bond payments or anything. Um, it, it also does allow the, um, the organization Horizon Health to spend dollars that they are bonding here in the city of Little Falls. It will also reimburse us for the expenses incurred through, who are public, doing the public hearing, um, pub, that publication. So tonight, this is just calling for that public hearing on March fifteenth.
What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I'd move to uh adopt Resolution 2021-21. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hansen, second by Councilmember Starly, any discussion? Call or roll, please.
Herkak?
Yes.
Dorley?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Wilchik?
Yes.
Knopfela?
Yes.
Wiltjegren?
Yes.
Harys?
Letter of Understanding, Community Asset Development Group, HDD Housing Project, approved. John?
Thank you, Council President. Um, and, you know, we've talked pretty extensively about this project, uh, or the last, or the letter of understanding request that we have on the table, as well as the process that we would need to establish to, to, to develop the TIP district. Um, I would like to add a couple other items. Um, it was talked about this, this parcel and just helped to understand TIP a little bit better, how it impacts our property taxes that we collect in the city. So this parcel is on city-owned property right now, so it generates no tax revenue whatsoever. A TIP district is designed to um capture the taxes paid and then give them back to the developer of that property for eligible expenses, as Jason, you know, spoke to in the work session. So whatever those eligible expenses are, whatever's captured in that, um, they're, they're paid back through the actual taxes that are paid on that parcel. So that property, instead of then, um, if there were no TIP district on it, if there, if there were a development to take place, it would just become part of our overall tax base. However, you know, as, as what was presented, we have, it's necessary for this project based on the needs to, to fill the gap and make it affordable so that the rents can be in, in the market rent area, that a, a TIP district be established. So once that's, once that's done, that TIP district lasts for a period of time, which it takes to capture all of those dollars for the time limit that is established at, at the onset. So twenty-five years is a maximum time for housing. So whereas if that project were to happen on its own without a TIP district, that would become part of the overall tax capacity and that would have an impact in which people would have, would see a small slight reduction in their property taxes. Instead, by establishing the TIP district, we're not increasing anyone's taxes, we're just postponing when that tax decrease benefit would, would come in play. But without the TIP district, you know, it's very un- it's unlikely that this project actually is able to be, to be done in our community because of the, you know, various market factors, economic impact, the cost of construction versus the rents they can establish. I think that was discussed and, and we do have, um, Dave is also, I think, who can join us as well as Bob and Mike. So if there are any other additional questions, um, Council President, you can choose to, to direct it from, from here. But that's, that's the intro- introduction that I wanted to make sure was, was me, Karen.
Yes. Well, does anyone else have any other questions for them? And what is the wish of the council? Move to approve. You're second?
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Canofla, second by Councilmember Wiltjegren, any discussion?
Yes, how much land is upon this?
The, the parcel request is looking at about around three and a half acres. And we have, uh, the Gideon Sworn property in its entirety is fifty-eight acres.
Okay, and this is basically, uh, they're gonna buy that from us for a dollar?
That, that's what, that's what the request is in the letter of understanding, yes.
Okay.
Mr. President, a letter of understanding that we're still gonna be voting on whether to accept the project or not. This is just kind of a, a formality to get the thing rolling, correct?
This, yes, this, this is necessary for uh Community Asset Development Group in order to proceed with some of the next steps that they, they need. This, this grants them site control. This does not in any way, shape, or form bind us to selling them that property under the exact terms. We still have to develop the TIP district, that still has to go through the, the public hearing process. We will establish and work, work through the terms in that development agreement during this timeframe. And, and there's, there's a lot of other, you know, very important details that are gonna be worked out in those documents. But in order for them to proceed, in order for them to engage with, uh, you know, on the USDA financing that they were looking at for this project, for them to have confidence to, and I know at the previous meeting, they, they discussed conducting a, um, or working to get a, a housing study done uh to help support this, this project, that they would need a document like this letter of understanding to be able to move forward that they, you know, their, the partners that they, they're, they'd be working with, or the entities that they're working with, aren't gonna be able to facilitate some of those actions and some of those planning stages without a letter of understanding. So it's not the final binding document, but it is setting the, the ground rules for which we're gonna, we're gonna negotiate and establish what those development agreements are with that TIP district. And hopefully, we would, you know, be able to find the agreement, work with, and, and be able to balance it out within these, within these terms that they presented.
Any other questions? Call or roll, please.
Starly?
Yes.
Hansen?
No.
Wilchik?
No.
Knopfela?
Yes.
Wiltjegren?
Yes.
Herkak?
Yes.
Harys?
Resolution 2021-22, Call for Public Hearing and Modification of Municipal District One and Establishment of Tax Increment Financing Number Forty-two, Community Asset Development Group, HDD, adopt. Glory?
This, um, excuse me, as we discussed in the, um, work session tonight, before is to be on Resolution 2021-22, which would call for a public hearing modifying our, um, our TIP district and establishing the, um, TIP district number forty-two for Community Asset Development Group. This would be a housing TIP, um, that would provide some assistance with the, um, expenses incurred for building the facility, and it would be expenses incurred that are on or in the ground. Um, as we, John indicated earlier, um, we still have to come up, you know, with the actual plan as far as what the pricing's gonna be, what the TIP will uncover, and that will all be addressed in the public hearing. This is just calling for the public hearing.
Council President, that, that date is actually in April, so it's April nineteenth. So we, we are giving ourselves some time to work, work through those details.
What is the wish of the council?
Before we get a motion on the table here, um, I just a procedural question here. A, um, like I said in the, in the planning meeting here, so the, my colleagues have approved the letter of understanding, and so that, that type of it's done. My question is, with the absentee's we have in the, in the previous vote, suspecting that they're probably gonna have them lying the same way, um, we think it might be prudent to postpone this until our next meeting?
Council President?
Yes.
Uh, the, the timing would function that way. We would be able to postpone this until the next meeting and still meet the requirements for calling for the public hearing at the April nineteenth meeting date. Um, there just, I do want to just keep in mind, um, we have very limited windows in which we can call public hearings. They have to be done by resolution. There are certain posting requirements from the newspaper to, you know, that they have to be at least a minimum number of days, but after the improvement, um, it have to be po- uh, published, publicized for a certain number of days. So there, there comes sticky points when, you know, you're trying to.
What happens, John, what happens if they make a motion and, and, and the votes fall out? Then what? I mean, it's a simple question, but then what? Does it come under a, a new resolution here? I'm not trying to be a two-sided, I have a feeling on, on this, and like I said in the work session, it's something that, we have two colleagues that aren't here on a resolution that are automatic no vote. So, um, you know, we, I want to be mindful of the process here. Uh, my question would be to postpone this until, until our next scheduled meeting.
And I think I understand where life is coming from, because if he votes no on this, and so does Frank or anybody else, with those two and the two that are absent as a no vote, that would put this, put an end to this, correct?
They would, it would, it would not proceed as approved at this meeting. Then I believe based on our charter, that an out, an item that has been voted down in, in a resolution form like this would need to, would need a member of the party, or one of the no votes would need to reintroduce that item at a later meeting.
Correct. And so like I said in the work session, I'm, two colleagues are gone. I'm, I'm not gonna use that maneuver to, to repeal this without my colleagues having a say.
So life, are you, are you, are you making the motion to postpone this until our next meeting then?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Hansen, second by Councilmember Starly, to postpone this resolution to our next meeting. Any discussion? Call or roll, please. A yes will postpone it to our next meeting.
Hansen?
Yes.
Excuse me, Wilchik?
Yes.
Knopfela?
Yes.
Wiltjegren?
Yes.
Herkak?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Harys?
City Council Reports on City Authorities, Boards, Bureaus, Commissions, and Committees. Anyone have anything, or Frank, you want to give us an update from your meeting the other night?
Yes, so we'll, uh, we did have a good meeting, it was well-participated, uh, various groups, a little pause. It was good to see the council representation. Uh, John was there and Mayor and, uh, Mr. Knopfela. And basically, it was a discussion to find out how receptive the museum is to putting a trailhead there and having, uh, bathroom facilities that would be open after hours. So bicyclists or ATV trails probably gonna come in right about that area too. So they'd have the availability to, uh, use the facilities, you know, like. So they'd have the availability to use the facilities, you know, like that. So anyway, it was a good discussion. Right now, as far as the group, we're looking at, we have some money here, and we're going to be discussing if it's good to do the engineering study from Little Falls to Camp Ripley, because that's a vital area as far as bike trail goes. So we will be bringing that up at our next meeting. The other part of it is, is we do need kind of a really good idea of what Little Falls wants as far as where they exit the City of Little Falls. So we'll have that discussion coming up here, and we know it's very important that we hook into this at that location because it will benefit Little Falls and it'll benefit the museum out there. So it was a good meeting, so anyway, let's call it up.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything?
Yeah, Mr. President, has there been any discussion on where we will be moving our meetings back into council chambers?
Council President?
Go ahead, John.
We haven't had that, but the last week, the recent change to the restrictions would, you know, I think give us the opportunity to do that. It's, you know, part of it's the functionality of the room. Our seats are not six feet apart as they're currently constructed. So I would recommend that we, you know, look at reorienting how we sit within the council chambers and having a plan on how we welcome any members of the public to participate. But, you know, certainly, to the point where our numbers are, have changed, you know, I think the availability of in-person or some level hybrid, it could still be important for those members that didn't feel it was, or in their best interest, or whatever reasons, to attend in-person. That would still be able to do some meetings remotely. I think that's absolutely a function that we can do, so, you know.
Would some factory last partitions fit the bill?
Possibly.
It's pretty subtle, I mean.
If it's just making sure that there's one barrier, a physical barrier between each of the seats, if they can't be six feet apart, then, you know, possibly. I don't know, I haven't looked at what that structure would be, and kind of looking at the room and seeing the physical structures that we have, I think we could work in a way that we could just reorient the room and have individual tables and stuff set up temporarily until, you know, we had a full comfortability to sit less than six feet apart.
Let you decide that, John. And you think we should do that?
I will work, I will work on preparing, you know, options for how we could set up the room, and I will bring that to the next meeting for discussion.
Yeah, I for one would appreciate that. I'm more than ready to get back in person. I might, I might actually have to, like, use my GPS to find city hall, it's been so long.
It has, it would be, I just, I happened to stumble across our last audio, our last meeting in person, and that was March 16. Closing in on here.
Anything else, anyone?
I do have one thing. At our December 21 meeting, if you're involved, we did apply for our service implementation block grant for the Fourth Street Northeast. I'm happy to announce that we did get ordered for that. We've seen that come to us right around the $100,000 mark for Fourth Street, so that's a good thing. That will be in discussion in 2025.
Okay.
Mr. President, Community Services, I don't know if anybody's been made aware, but they are offering trap shoot for, I believe, middle school and high school students. If anybody has anybody interested in that, contact Community Services and get signed up.
We will adjourn our meeting at 8:25. Thank you, everyone. Bye-bye.
Good night.
Good night. Lori, are you feeling honored to run?